I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. At this time Chairman Yoder will have the implication. The pledge of allegiance will begin by Commissioner Andrew Ferguson. I'd ask all of you would to please rise and remove your caps.
Our kindly, most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that we have that we can gather in a place where there's freedom. Freedom to speak, freedom to speak and to think the way that we would like as long as it doesn't have hurt or affect other people. We have that freedom. Thank you for allowing us to be able to have the freedom to meet, to discuss, and help us that we would make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of this county. We'd also ask that you'd be with our leaders of our state, be with the leaders on the federal level, be with our military personnel both home and abroad, and we'd ask that you'd be with those injured military personnel who are in the hospitals and who are going through treatments for various injuries and wounds that they have received and trying to defend the freedoms of those people in the United States. And we'd ask that you'd be with each and every one of us tonight. Bless us, keep us safe, and provide us a safe journey on our way home. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, does any commissioner have any report that they'd like to give? There being none, the agenda is before you. Each and every one of you should have received a copy prior to. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I'd like that we... A second.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap are raising their right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. This is a public hearing and I will call this public hearing into session at this time. Last week, we had a meeting and I made a terrible mistake. I said that you had to sign up in order to speak at this meeting. That was a mistake on my part. I totally apologize to the people that are here and I apologize to the citizens of this county for making that mistake. In a public hearing, all folks have a right to speak on an issue that is being discussed at that time. So at this time, I turn it over to Mr. Rick French, County Manager, who will begin the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold on one second. Thank you. The 2014-2015 proposed budget for the Alexander County General Fund is $34,621,230 or .025%, quarter percent less than the 2013-2014 budget, which totaled $35,528,150. This is a decrease of $906,785. A total of $38,389,041 was requested by departments in the 2014-2015 budget. The proposed budget contains the same tax rate of 60 and a half cents. A four cent tax increase is critical and is recommended because the county fund balance is extremely and unacceptably low. A total of 2.5 million is budgeted from fund balance, and again, that's, that number will change a little bit as we go along, as we work on the budget before it's finalized, leaving around $2 million in June of 2015. Our fund balance on June the 30th, 2012 was 29.49%. Last year, at the end of June, it was 24.04%. Alexander County will receive a stern letter from the North Carolina Local Government Commission once our audit report is reviewed with such a big decrease in fund balance this year. A low fund balance will prevent Alexander County from borrowing money for projects such as water projects or EDC projects. A low fund balance will also impact our cash flow, and in this particular case, our ability to move forward is scheduled with the Alexander County CBCC Taylor Togs Project, in which nearly 1.5 million in grants will have to be delayed until later in the, this year or early in 2015. This sends the wrong message to industry and businesses in Alexander County. Remember that Alexander County currently has a $3.2 million zero interest loan, water loan, and does not have the cash flow to support a $2 million project with CBCC and a $3 million water project. We just don't have the fund balance cash to do that. The budget as presented does not contain the following. A local match, the local match of $500,000 for Alexander County CBCC Taylor Togs Grant Project. The commissioners did vote on it, but we haven't officially done that. A local match of $225,000 for Rocky Face Park Phase II Grant Project. A new county garage in the amount of $265,000. An evidence storage building for the Sheriff's Department in a, in the amount of $100,000. An amount of $75,000 to demolish the old Dayton Building. No COLA or salary increases for county employees. We have also, in the budget, reduced most general travel 50% and supply line items. Almost all capital line items requested in the 2014-2015 budget are not recommended due to low fund balance. There are no cars for the Sheriff's Department detention or DSS. Our technology budget was reduced, they requested $133,000, recommended as $22,500. There is a 50% reduction in debt service payment. There, there is a, we have been budgeted $150,000 for our portion of the Alexander Central High School auditorium payment, but as I talked to Dr. Wumble, we can delay that and that'll save us $150,000 in this year's budget. And they do have, the school does have the sales tax to be, to be used, and also their reduction of CBCC operational cost of $40,000.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
May I interject a question here? How many more payments do we have to make on the...
I believe three.
Three, on the auditorium?
I think that's right. How many more auditorium payments? Is it 18?
I mean, 18?
Yes.
That sounds about right.
Okay, I have that information at my desk, but I don't...
That sounds about right. I just want to make sure.
Bulletproof vest are in the budget, and that's $20,125. A replacement ambulance of $130,000, and a required item in the animal, in animal control, which is about $4,500, is in the 2014-2015 budget. There's a, something called a mezzanine barrier that goes into detention facility. We have placed that in contingency. There are two new county employees in the budget. These employees will be setting up a, will be setting up a purchasing department, department which will start in January 2015. The purchasing department activities will include purchasing office supplies, garage supplies, janitorial supplies, furniture, vehicles, other capital outlay purchases, copy and print services, confidential shred services, courier and posted services, county credit cards, cell phones, uniforms, and utilities. That department will also be responsible for contract review and file management, e-verify documentation for vendors and contractors, compliance with bidding requirements, and maintaining the purchasing, uh, purchasing policy, employee and contractor documentation for vendors, maintenance certificates for insurance and from contractors. There are also several contracts that we've talked about with Western Piedmont Council of Governments are under review for, and therefore overlay districts, minimum housing, and code enforcement, and we haven't placed any of those in the budget yet, but we're still looking at those. We'll place them at appropriate time. Alexander County, as we all know, has one planning position in the budget who is responsible for all these services, and it's more than that person can do. Alexander County has also received a letter from the Alexander County School Superintendent, Dr. Brock Wumble. The letter requests an additional $256,300. I believe you all have a copy of that letter, and it's very short, and let me read it, please. Dear Rick, the Alexander County Board of Election voted at their meeting on May 13th, 2014, to ask for an additional $256,300 for fiscal year 2014-2015. This amount combined with the $2050,000 increase we received from the 2013-2014 fiscal year equals the amount of low wealth funding we would have received last year if the property tax were above the state average. The increase would make our total county appropriation $5,506,300, plus fines and forfeitures and auditorium supplement of $150,000. We are very grateful for the $250,000 in additional funding that we received for the 2013-2014 fiscal year, and appreciate your consideration of the request for additional funding for 2014-2015. Sincerely, Dr. Brock Wumble. And it's, was sent to us May 14th, and that's, we used to say that additional funding's not in the budget either. So how did we get to this point financially when our fund balance was 29%, 29% two years ago? And I just, I guess overly simplified here, it's just not one thing. It's a combination of Medicaid reform and changing our sales tax from per capita to point of sale, combined with building a eight and a half million dollar law enforcement and detention center with a $2.5 million operational increase, combined with no growth in sales or property tax revenue, combined with purchasing property for future county offices and CBCs, spending $1.8 million, plus another $500,000 to $600,000 for the CBCC project, which we've talked about earlier, without a tax increase. It's what we would call the perfect storm. And let's also remember that our budget includes other funds. It includes solid waste, the different fire districts, emergency 911, Bethlehem Sewer, and so on, and none of those funds will have an increase. The water fund includes a 3.2% increase from the City of Hickory. We should increase, the county should increase their rates to 5%. This whole structure with the Bethlehem Water District, the rate structure should be adjusted for the future. We should certainly take a look at it before we adopt the budget if possible. There are no other increases in any other funds.
Mr. French, one more question.
Yes, sir.
If we, if you go back to the line you were talking about when the Medicaid reform and the changing of the sales tax from per capita to, to point of sale, as I recall reading through various reports and figures from the state, that cost Alexander County about $2.9 million in sales tax?
Somewhere in that neighborhood. Yes, sir.
Okay. Sales tax revenue, excuse me?
Yes, sir. Jennifer Herman, our Finance Director, has prepared some slides concerning the budget. The first slide that you have, that you can see, is the 2014-2015 proposed budget. General fund revenues, which is 34.6 million dollars. Again, these are the revenues, 45% of the revenues come from property taxes, 15 from sales and services. Fund balance appropriated is seven. Other taxes and licenses, 16%. State grants, eight, and federal grants, six. There's other minor, but that's the bulk of where the revenue is identified from for this coming year's proposed budget. If you go to the next slide, the expenditures for the 2014-2015 proposed budget in the general fund is broken out in human services, 30%, public safety, 25%, general government, 15%, is it 15%? Education, 15%, debt service, 8%, and you have, and cultural and recreational, 3%. Interfund transfers, 2%, and economic and fiscal development, 1%. It also has some other slides to show you. General fund expenditures, and the blue is 2014, and whatever, orange, I'm not sure, is that, whatever that color, salmon, whatever color that is, is 2015. And you'll notice, human services, the differences there, they're pretty, pretty close. School system, it's actually a little less if we do the $150,000. Public safety is just, is a little more total. And again, these are grouped, as it's grouped in our audit. Any questions about any of the slides so far? You have copies of those in front of you, both on the screen and... Next slide, general government. And see the numbers for general government, it's less than 2015, a little bit less, the debt service dropped just a little. Environmental and economic development is increased. Cultural and recreational likewise, and you see those numbers, and I hope most people can see them in the audience, although I'm sure they're, might be too small for some. Sorry.
Mr. French, if you don't mind, sir?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know that they should be self-explanatory on the bottom as, as in reference to general government, environmental, culture and recreation, but could you explain just a little, sir, what the, what those are by definition, if you don't mind, please?
Okay.
In generality?
Okay. General government is administration, finance, all the general government services, human services, well, debt services, of course, the debt that we have, and I've got, I don't have something, a slide, but I have information about the amount of debt that we have. We want to talk about that. Of course, environmental and economic development, like you said Larry, speaks to itself. Cultural and recreational is Recreation Department. I guess Rocky Face would be in part of that, and anything else in that, you know, in that general description would fall into that. If you'll go to the next, Detention Center expenses and revenues. Detention Center revenues are in the blue, Detention Center, I'm sorry, Detention Center expenses are in the blue. Detention Center revenues are in the green, or whatever, that's a green color, and you can see it year by year. 2011, detention, the expenses, $1,038,000 compared to $33,000 in revenue in the 2012. $1,132,000 compared to $22,000 in revenue in 2013. $1,469,000 compared to $34,288. And in 2014, 2.3 million, $232,000 compared to $393,500. That's the 2014 budget, and as proposed, 2.4 million compared to $589,000 in revenue. That gives you a pretty good idea about revenue to expenses and for the detention center, which we talked about at our last meeting, and we've talked about in work sessions before, prior to that, so... Next slide, other governmental funds by expenditure, 14 compared to 15. Revail fund, which the revale will happen not next year, but the year after. So we set aside money each year for revale, so to help us with that, we're required by statute to do that, and of course, there's a little bit less as we wind, as we're getting ready to start the actual revale. Fire districts, and those numbers are almost identical, and that's the fire districts fund, that's for all the volunteer fire departments, and then 911 communications fund, that's pretty close too, so that shows you those numbers. Next slide, enterprise fund, which includes Bethlehem Water, the county water fund, landfill closure fund, and solid waste fund. The solid waste fund is 1.6 in 14, it drops, drops down in 2015, as does the landfill closure fund. County water fund is also down somewhat, just, just a minor amount, and county water fund is all the water districts combined outside of the Bethlehem Water District, and it's 1.1 million, and it's basically the same. A little bit less in next year's proposed budget. Bethlehem Waters runs about the same, and that's for the 20, about 2,400 customers that are in the Bethlehem Water District, as that, as that grows. So that's our enterprise fund expenses for 2014 and 2015 budget years, and you have those slides. Are there any others? That's it. Are there any questions of me or...
Mr. French, I'll just start out by asking one question. Even though our budget proposed for 2014 and 15 is $34,621,230, what percentage of that, sir, is mandated by the state or mandated under, under programs that we have to do in order to provide services?
Most of it, most, I'd say better than 80% of it.
Better than 80%. So in reality, then, what we're looking at is, we're looking at, we actually control somewhere between 15 and 18%, is that correct? Would you say that'd be real close?
Yes, sir. I mean, when you consider debt service and the things that you do with the schools and a lot of the different programs that you have, you have, you're in control of very little of the general fund revenues and expenses.
And the percentage of our taxes that we receive are also, go to the schools. I believe, I can't remember the article.
Five million dollars, five million, 2 million?
I'm talking about, yeah, the taxes that we receive though, from local sales tax and everything, part of that goes to the...
That's correct.
To the, to the, to the schools.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. French, at this time?
I'd be glad to answer questions later if some arise.
Okay.
Well, just a comment. You said in that same paragraph that Commissioner Yoder was talking about, changing sales tax from per capita to the point of sale, you said when we changed sales tax...
The state changed it, we didn't change it.
The state of North Carolina changed that. I wanted to make clear for people watching or listening. And also, as far as all these different revenues that come into the county, basically, sales tax, we have no control over. You know, you get federal grants, state grants, we have some, a little control over taxes and licenses and fees, but the, really, the only thing that the county commission is able to control to raise, lower, or keep the same is property tax.
Yes, sir. That and water, water revenues.
Water revenues.
Right.
But as far as a tax goes, property taxes is it. And people think that the county commission has control over a lot of other fees and taxes, and that's just not the case, so...
And Mr. French, if I may add to the comments just given, the, the amount of revenue that's generated by sales tax in the county, as we've seen month over month, even though it's two months in arrears that we get the report, our sales tax revenues for the last fiscal year have been flat.
Very flat, that's correct.
Because, again, it goes to, I think, just in my interpretation of what's happening, it's because Alexander County lacks shopping centers where people can go, like, as opposed to Hickory, Statesville, other counties around us. So again, going back to the point of sale distribution of sales tax revenue, if somebody goes to Hickory to purchase a refrigerator or an automobile or whatever, that sales tax goes to Catawba County, not to Alexander County. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And you made that point, I wanted to mention that if you look at the last, the current year, what, through the end of April, and again, there's some, there'll be some other adjustments, how close the revenues are, last, last month, I think we talked about, or maybe even last week, we talked about the numbers. Currently, we've received $27,750,000 in revenue in the general fund so far this fiscal year, and again, that's through the end of April. Last year, we received $27,260,000. The year prior to that, we received $26,000, I mean, I'm sorry, $26,760,000, and $26,760,000. There is some variance in that, but again, look how close the revenues are running, just sort of tracking, you can sort of track those all the way through. So I just want to mention that, follow it up with what you're saying, Commissioner.
I have one more question for you, Mr. French. Four years from now, if, if our tax rate is exactly the same as this today, what, what's Alexander County going to look like? Are we going to be able to do any kind of capital projects? Are we going to be able to increase funding to schools or education? Are we going to be able to provide any kind of new facilities for, you know, the, the evidence storage building for the Sheriff's Department, new cars? What are we going to be, what is it going to look like?
Four years from now?
Yeah, four or five years.
I don't, I mean, I don't think you can, I mean, four years from now, if you leave the same property tax rate, there'll be some drastic changes in what you see with county government. I mean, there'll have to be drastic changes from the things that we've talked about at our work session. None of those things will happen. I don't see how. We'll have to make some, and we'll have to make some shifts in how we do things, some drastic shifts in how we do things. Again, since 2010, 2011, when we built, built the law enforcement and detention center, we sort of had that discussion, that wasn't the discussion, the session the board had, they set aside, they had, they increased property, they voted to increase property taxes to pay the debt service, but did not do that for the increase in operational costs. So if the general fund has to basically eat $2.5 million, we won't be doing any projects because our fund balance will continually be below 8%. I'm not really sure how we'll survive. Next year with the, the following year with the revale, with what we're anticipating's going to be a decrease, just, just to be revenue neutral, which is what you like to do, you'll be in a very bad place financially. It'll also impact industry and any kind of projects that we do water-wise, we won't be able to borrow grants, you won't be able to get low interest loans in the state because you won't qualify. I mean, there's just a whole plethora of things that you'll run into. But four years from now, I think it'll be much, much worse.
Mr. French, just a follow-up, so everybody in the audience and everybody listening on the radio and that will eventually watch on television, the county really basically has, other than grants that we apply for, has two, two basic sources of revenue. Property tax revenue and sales tax revenue.
That's correct.
So if you've got flat sales tax revenue, no growth, we anticipate a decrease in property tax revenue because of reevaluation, just because of the prices of housing and because of the state of the economy. So I just wanted to concur, or have you concur, in fact, that's our main two sources of revenue for the county.
It is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. French, I appreciate the graphic aids, it's very instructive. It would probably have been more instructive to be able to go back more than just a single year to show some trending. Based on the, the previous trending as far as expenses, we've seen a steady increase in the operational expenses across all departments, correct?
Well, we've seen some. Now, some of them are actually down, if you look at them, the, the departments are down. The larger departments are up significantly, and with EMS struggling to meet revenue as we have in the past, and again, I think this, it was stated when we had our work session that departments don't pay for themselves, whether they, whether EMS is supposed to or not, they never, it never has worked that way. They usually generate about 50% of their revenue. Those, those revenues are down. It has a, more of an impact on services when you have, we have so many small, two and three-person department. I would say, if you think about it, if you take the DSS department, which has around 70 employees, and if you take the Sheriff's Department, Detention Center, and 911, which that's almost the same number, Health Department and EMS make up almost, you figure that's over 200 of our 270 employees, and, and you have, probably next is Tax Office, which has right at 10. The rest of the departments are really small departments, two people departments. You have Veteran Services, which has one, you have Recreation has three, and so on down the line, so, and haven't grown much. We're, it wasn't that long ago, for example, with animals control services, that we had four full-time people and several part-time people, and we, and they stayed very busy. We've gone to more part-time people, and we're at three full-time folks, but I mean, I guess I'm trying to say is that we've, keep moving stuff around to try to make it work as best that we can to provide the services.
But overall, since, let's say, since 2010, four years ago, what is the size as far as the employee base of the county? Has it increased?
Yes, it has, but most of those are in the emergency service area. I'd say 95% of them are in the emergency service area. Very little outside of that.
When you mean emergency services, you mean Sheriff's Department?
I mean Sheriff's Department, detention, EMS, and so on. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted just to make, mention one thing, you were talking about the Veteran Service Officer and Ginger Anis. I, I wanted just to make, uh, mention one thing. You were talking about the Veteran Service Officer, and Ginger Anis is her name. Um, because Memorial Day is coming up, and it's kind of a special time for veterans, such as myself, and I know Andrew Ferguson is a veteran, and we're gonna hear a veteran, uh, Veterans Memorial Day service, uh, presentation. But what, that one person services about twenty-eight hundred veterans that live in the Alexander County.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it's very important that she, she stretch to the max, too, because of the amount of people that she services, but she does an excellent job.
She does. She does a very good job. I mean, I think we have a lot of good employees that work pretty, work very hard for the county. Um, and I guess, again, if you go back, when we started this, I guess, the process for building a new law enforcement and detention center, you know, we knew it was gonna cost more to operate than the current facility, and then we had a, you know, the, at the courthouse, we had an old jail, um, twenty-six beds, and it was always crowded. It was not safe for the people that worked there. And commissioners started talking in the, you know, two thousand seven, two thousand six, and I know there was even a couple of committees put together back in the early two thousand, even, talking about what we need to do and started talking about it. But when, when we got to the point, and I believe this board, um, pretty much, uh, made the mo- made the motions to move forward with financing of it. Of course, by that time, we were, had already bid the work, and we got good bids, and we built a, a law enforcement detention center. And we knew it was gonna cost, not, we knew it was gonna cost the same to operate a hundred and sixty-four-bed facility with all, everything compared to where we, where we current, where we were. So, I think that's been the thing that we've all wrestled with, is that increased cost, however you, however you shape it. If you look at the amount of money that our budgets run short, it's in that neighborhood, and then you couple that with the things that we mentioned. You know, when, when Medicaid reform, it hurt us. You know, the change in sales taxes, Chairman Yoder has mentioned time and time again, and several of you have talked about, changing from per capita killed us. I mean, financially, it really hurt us. But that was just one piece. And at the same time, just think that happened four years ago, I guess, four years ago. You couple that with building a jail, and you have an increased cost. You couple that with buying property for, not only for CBCC, which is a worthwhile project, but also for future county offices. And you couple that with the other things that we've had to deal with. It's just, we're just at a place where it's difficult.
And, and as you mentioned, not to interrupt you, but as you mentioned, the downturn in the economy,
Yes, sir.
as a result of, you know, just the financial collapse and affected basically everybody, I would suspect everybody in this room has been affected one way or the other. So, that's, I, I'm going back to your reference of the perfect storm, and it's this confluence of all these issues that caused us to be where we are.
You know, and something Commissioner Ferguson mentioned earlier, you know, two-years data really isn't, uh, four-years is, is probably better. That's why we, we talk about finances, for the most part, we talk about at least four years, because you wanna look at trends and things that are going on. But since, we know since two thousand, again, since two thousand ten, we voted to move forward with the construction of the law enforcement detention, we were gonna have additional cost. And, again, going back to something we've said, our, our sales taxes have been flat, flat. Pro- we haven't raised property taxes, and they've been flat. So, like you said, Mr. Jennings, it's the perfect storm.
Mr. French, I'm gonna ask a question.
Yes, sir.
So, put your thinking cap on.
Okay.
If this board decided to cut sixteen employees from the county government, even though that it would remove money from the top line, and you would see a decrease in the budget because of the expense of, say, sixteen employees, with cutting the services of those sixteen employees, what would be the cost of removing sixteen employees versus keeping them? In what way would we actually save money by doing that, sir?
Well, I, I mean-
I want everybody to know this hypothetical situation here, I'm just asking a question because I want, I want everybody to hear the answer. Okay? Thank you, Mr. French.
I mean, I don't know that there's a good, clear answer to that because it sort of depends what departments are talking about. You know, unemployment is over thirty, when you, if you cut someone in the budget process, you have to pay their unemployment, you have to pay basically thirty-three percent of their salary in ben- benefits, you gotta pay that. We also, in our personnel policy, we have to pay them, I believe it's two weeks, and then you have to pay them all their vacations. So, with every sixteen employees, you do that, you'll pay tha- that upfront. And wherever they are, however they're spread by departments, be impacted. Some departments, it'll hurt certainly more than others. If it was two- and three-person departments, it would just have to, we'd have to do the best we could, I guess, um, Larry, so, um-
Also, in that same situation, Mr. French, if I'm not mistaken, if I worked for the county as a full-time employee,
Mm-hmm.
uh, and I had a hundred and fifteen hours of comp time.
You gotta pay that, that's correct.
You have to pay that, is that not correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
And you still also have to give the, the employees their vacation?
Certainly. That's what I said earlier. You have to, you have to pay all those things.
I'm, 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 I'm-
And, and if you're in-
I'm just trying to get the information, that's all I'm trying to do, sir.
In, in some departments, it'll have different, you know, if it was in, and again, I'm not talking about, I know Cindy's here, if you're talking about-
We're talking about social services this time, I mean, because-
Talk about DSS or health, you're talking about a lot of employees that are funded maybe fifty percent or, or more with state money. So, it var- it varies depending on the departments, but in a county our size, and where the growth of employees have been, it, and if you, and if you don't, if you go away from the non-emergency areas, you're gonna have a tremendous impact on services. I mean, you, it's got to be, it's got to. I mean, think of the number of people that we have, where we were five and ten years ago. It hasn't varied that much. I've been here fifteen years, and a lot of departments are the same or smaller. Now, we have some new, new things. For example, we have a, a tag office, which we haven't had, I think we've had it three years. Isn't that right?
Three years.
And we talked about it going in, it was gonna provide a service. We knew we weren't gonna make money with it. Um, I think, I think basically, we, um, are about eighty thousand dollars in revenue, that's somewhere in there, short. Um, and, I mean, a couple of full-time employees, a part-time person, but it did offer a service that was gonna leave our tailors' room, you know, we wouldn't have a service at all. So, we decided, Commissioners directed me, we talked with the state, and we have that service. Um, that's something that we had, that we didn't have five years ago. But it's things like that that provide services to citizens, and I think that's something that as we go along, you just kept to have to keep a watchful eye on those things. That's why I think, the real misconception here is that the budget process starts in March, and you adopt a budget in June. Well, I can tell you that the Finance Department and, and my office, we watch it every month. We watch it closely. We look at trends, we look at data for several years past. You know, we'll come to you and talk to you about something we're concerned about, uh, early, and we'll talk to the departments early, because we take it seriously. Our budget process is twelve months a year. Um, so we don't wanna be surprised by anything. Our budget is tight, and it's always been that way.
Also, I wanna step back to the license plate agency also, just so that everyone would know, once the state changed, that all vehicle taxes would be collected whenever you buy your license plate.
That's correct. That's one of the reasons.
That was one of the factors that we put in whenever we were discussing during the drive, the license plate agency.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That's under the direction of the, uh, the Tax Office. Uh, and, and I understand that, and that's a, and I forgot the other question I was gonna ask you because I was really wanting to stress the point there that, uh, on these things. I know what the question was.
Okay.
You said in your summary of the fourteen, fifteen budget, that you felt like that unless this board raised taxes four cents, that we'd be in a critical situation.
Our fund balance will be below eight percent, and we don't wanna get there. We don't wanna be below eight percent.
Yes, I understand. It'd be under eight percent. I totally understand that, sir. If you were gonna make a wholeheartedly recommendation to this board on how much taxes should be increased, sir?
Should?
Yes, sir. What would your-
Not just to cover, not just to cover fund balance?
Yes, sir. Let me finish, you know, don't mind.
Okay, sure.
Okay, uh, so if you were gonna make a total recommendation to this board right now, what the taxes should be raised this year versus probably what they were gonna be, need to be raised next year, what would you say?
Uh, taxes should, should be raised this year at least eight cents, at least eight cents, and, and maybe even eight to, to ten cents. They'll be, they're not, I'm not trying to be the great predictor of where it's going, but, but if the revale's gonna drop the rate in revenue with the things that we're, we're gonna look at, unless something drastically changes, we're gonna need a tax increase two years. If we do a small tax increase this year, we're gonna need a big tax increase next year. We're gonna need one of those kinds like what was in the, in the newspaper. We're gonna need a ten-cent-plus tax increase. I mean, if you think about it, if you do the math, if our revale drops five percent, you've got, that's basically two cent, two or three cents. If you do four cents, you're just bringing the fund balance back to eight and a half, eight and a half percent, nine percent. We're just hanging on by our fingernails. We still have all these items we've talked about that we haven't resolved. And again, if sales taxes goes flat, and, you know, property tax is the only place we have. And I know, I don't like to pay more taxes, and I know you don't like to pay more taxes, and I know citizens don't like to pay more taxes, but I don't know the, where else, where else you go. Um, and I guess, again, I'll go back to two thousand ten, when we built our law enforcement detention center. I mean, we've, we've got to accept some responsibility for that, fiscal responsibility for that. There's two and a half million dollars. We just can't eat that amount. We just can't eat that every year. There's things that we need to do, and we need to do differently, but those things, no, we could organize things differently, possibly, but those changes happen more slowly than we probably all would like for them to happen. And there's different things that we do, we, we do differently from other counties. Um, so, some of, parts of it are good from a financial standpoint, some parts are not.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more question.
Okay.
And I mean, I'm not trying to hog the show here.
Okay.
The school asked for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'd already, I mean, this, the, the discussion has been to cut them a hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I'm, there's, there's nobody here from the school system that I know of, I haven't seen anyone, but they sent a letter asking for that. One of the offsets of the school budget is the low wealth money.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not, I'm not an expert at that, sir. I mean, I know that you know a little about it.
Mm-hmm.
But would you explain that to, and how that affects the revenue that the schools get versus what we would have to give them if we had a tax increase?
The low, if you increase property taxes four cents, it won't impact any, any of the low wealth money they get this year. It'll only impact them next year, and I don't have any idea of the amount, but it'll be next year. And I, I'd have to look and see what the average tax rate was, and I could tell you from all that information, but I couldn't tell you.
But that low wealth money is totally based on a formula
It is.
with the tax rate that they do in order for the schools to receive more money from the state.
What they get more funding is that they want the county's tax rates to be higher. We've all, we've been to meetings in Raleigh where they like to talk about, they want the county tax rates high, much higher than they are. And that's something that, you know, most counties, we, we all want our tax rates as low as we can. I think, um, Scotland County probably has the highest tax rate in North Carolina.
No.
But I don't think that's something they're proud of.
They're not.
So, but all that being said, that's how, that's how it works. It'd be the following year.
So, if you raise property taxes, the low wealth funds, the funding that the school system gets from the state actually will go up some?
It'll increase some. It's gotta be above, above, above the state average.
What is the state average?
I don't, I'm not sure what that number is. Did you know what the number is? So, it's gotta be above that.
Gotta be above sixty-two cents.
That's correct. That's the state average.
Thank you, Mr. French.
Mr. French, I have a, a question, i- if you don't mind, and, and it doesn't have to be a long narrative, as far as I'm concerned, but I think it, well, I, you know, I think it'd be helpful, though, for some of the folks in the audience here, and again, on the radio, and, uh, that will watch it on TV, uh, a small history of the fact that we built the law enforcement center. It just wasn't an idea of this board that dropped out of the sky. Give some history of why it was built.
Wow. Um, um, I know it's been discussed over the years, but probably, from my history here, um, early, probably around two thousand, there were a, a committee, uh, organized with county attorney, judges, the sheriff, commissioner, or somebody from county, myself, and different, to start talking about it, and there were different discussions about it even back then. And I think, uh, probably mid, probably two thousand seven, and that, right in that, those, that year or so, is when things got a lot more serious. And again, one thing that prohibited us from moving forward with it seriously was our fund balance was too low. Jennifer Herman and I went to Raleigh a couple of times to talk to the LGC about it, and they basically looked at us and said, you gotta be kidding us. You know, you got your fund balance up to ten percent, and we were like, yeah, and they were saying, you gotta be kidding. The state average is twenty-some percent. Come back when you get it up a little bit more, get that fund balance number up. And so, we talked with them and sent them information, financial information, and two thousand eight, two thousand nine, as time went on, we got our fund balance built up a little bit, and it was acceptable to the LGC. And, um, we spent a lot of time talking about the size jail that we wanted, the layout. Um, I think at the time, it was, uh, Sheriff, the sheriff was Sheriff Bentley, and we talked with him about it. Um, we talked, we employed Jack Camp Hill. We had a, uh, I think we actually used this room. We had presentations from architects and, and went through that process. I mean, but we've been doing this eight or nine years. There's been a, a part of a process going on until, until the bid was awarded in two thousand ten to actually do the construction, and we borrowed the money and moved forward. We borrowed ten million dollars. We talked about borrowing twelve million and even more, but we ended up borrowing ten million dollars and built a hundred and sixty-four-bed detention center. We also built law enforcement center because it, it was pretty much what we had in the courthouse, was not very much. And so, we moved into that type facility. We already had the property, you know, on, uh, over across from where we are tonight, over here at CBCC. And we moved forward with, you know, construction of it, and here we are. I think the, the facility was dedicated in November or December of two thousand twelve. I think it was the same time that the, that the Bethlehem Fire Station was dedicated, it was actually the same Saturday, I believe, that happened, so. And then, since thirteen, started moving in and taking prisoners, and then the process has moved that way, and here we are today, where I'm not sure exactly what the number is, but a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty inmates are being housed. Doesn't take long to fill it up. We house inmates, out-of-county inmates. We have a contract with Caldwell County, we, they house thirty-five inmates, and we house some inmates from Wilkes County, some females from Wilkes.
Let me, let me interject a, a question within that, the comments you just gave. Now, I wasn't on the board in the, uh, discussion phases, but as I heard, have heard in, as, as the history of this thing, the genesis of it, there was also some judicial, judicial, um, pressure from a judge for us to build a new jail. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You know, you've, you've been in our courthouse, you see how wonderful the facilities, facilities are. Um, and the other part of it, not only is it, you know, uh, we, we have to house in, in that many beds, maybe up to however many it was, forty or greater, whatever it was when they had court, but it wasn't safe for the people that worked there. I mean, I was surprised we didn't have that problem where we have, you know, the safety of the employees, so we had that concern. But there, there was lots of discussion, there was a lot of discussion in the eight, nine years, Mr. Jennings, where we talked about, if we build this, it's gonna cost additional revenue. And we talked about several things. There were several components of that. One, there was, we talked about the money we'd save from, you know, we got so later on in, uh, last few years, before we built the new facility, where we were taking inmates all over, and we were spending, you know, up to four hundred thousand dollars transporting, you know, transporting people. The Sheriff's Department, the, the deputies were on the road all the time, transporting, so we had, there was gonna be a savings there. And then we, you know, we thought we could, we could generate revenue, you know, we could generate, we looked at, rightly or wrongly, we looked at the Ash County facility, since it was like the one we were undertaking, we were interested in building, we looked at lots of facilities. There was a group of us that went and looked all over, um, and several different people went and looked over, um, different jails in North Carolina. So, it wasn't, like you're saying, it wasn't just something, an idea, and we started the process. But it was a component of saving money from housing, taking prisoners to other counties, which we were doing, um, generating revenue from out-of-county inmates. And we knew that there'd be, have to be some, uh, tax involved in it. Now, there was a small sales tax that the county passed several years ago, that a lot of that money's generated towards it also. I think that's three hundred and some thousand dollars.
That was the special quarter set sales tax that this county passed.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd asked for a penny.
Right.
We asked for a penny, and for some reason, other people in Raleigh, we'll give you a quarter.
They gave everybody a-
Everybody, that's right, they basically, they had to do it by a referendum. Right.
And it passed here. It still hadn't passed in a lot of counties.
Right.
But it generated, I'll say, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That number might be higher or lower, but it's not a whole lot difference than that, and that helps. But, again, when you talk about two and a half million dollars, you, we got a long ways to go. And so, here we are, again, having sort of the, a modified discussion, a discussion that we had last year, a discussion we had the year before that, and the year before that, because we knew- the discussion we had the year before that, and the year before that, because we knew we were gonna get into this.
A comment, maybe a supposed question, but I know you were involved, you and I, and I think you, Commissioner Mayberry, we went up to visit the Ash County Jail, probably three years ago?
I believe it was maybe almost four years ago.
Maybe it could be four years ago. And we talked to the sheriff and took a tour of the jail. And jail is built by the same architect, is like our jail, except they have a kitchen. We don't have a kitchen.
Camp Hill and Associates, yes, sir.
Right. We talked to the sheriff as we took the tour. You had subsequent conversations with the chairman of the county commission up in Ash County.
I did.
And they were generating 1.2 million dollars from their out-of-county inmates.
Right.
And we are generating, as we sit here today, how much money are we generating from out-of-county inmates?
We'll budget, this year, we'll end up around 400,000.
Maybe that much.
Yeah, around 400,000. We budgeted, I think sheriff's department told us around 580, 580,000 dollars.
This year was 756,000.
That's what we budgeted. That's what we budgeted, but what we're actually receiving will be less than 400,000.
So, what we're actually achieving in revenues is about 400,000.
Right.
But again, just comparing our county to Ash County, the same jail, same construction, same size population, they generate 1.2, and we generate 400,000.
What, next year in the budget, what is, what has the sheriff told us to anticipate in revenue for next year?
580, 575.
575,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. French.
Yes, ma'am.
In all fairness, we cannot blame this dilemma we're in on the building of the jail.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do that.
Okay, I just want it made plain that this commission knew full well-
Sure.
-what the debt was. They continued to spend more, and you did warn us, did you not?
Yes, ma'am.
That we were spending too much money.
Commissioner Moose, yes. And we've talked about it every year. You know, we've talked about it.
So, this is not a surprise.
That's what I mean. We keep having this, sort of this same conversation, sort of a modified version of it each year. Yes, ma'am.
So, it's not a surprise.
That's what I'm saying. We went into, go back to what Commissioner Jennings was saying, the process to build the new law enforcement detention center just didn't happen in 2009. It'd been, conversations had been held for a long time. And we, you know, we got to a point where we selected an architect and moved forward with that process, and looked at jails, looked at detention centers. We went, we looked at Watauga, we looked at Wilkes, and we looked at Ash. We went all over. We went and looked at Brunswick County Jail. We, we went all over the state looking at detention facilities. So, it wasn't any, but what I'm trying to say is, we knew, when we made the decision to move forward, as because we've been having conversation, that it was gonna cost us something more than what we had. What, if we just kept our tax rate where it was, we knew it was gonna cost more to operate. It just was. So, that's the conversation we had then, and that's sort of part of what the same conversation we're having now. So, it's, you're right. It's not, it's not the fault of anyone. It's just, that's one piece of the puzzle, so to speak. And like Berkey said, and it is a perfect storm. It's a perfect situation where we've had income, not, not meeting expectations, and we've had expenses, and we've moved up forward with projects, and we've known this.
But had we raised taxes three cent last year, it would help offset some of the costs of what we're doing now. And also, people also need to understand that when we were discussing this jail, and discussing what they're doing, I'm not gonna fire bullets at it, or throw bullets at the past commission or this board either one.
Sure.
But when we talked about building this jail, we knew then there was gonna be an operational cost.
Certainly.
And we knew then, and we talked about it, in, in, in the board meetings, we talked about how we'd have to have a tax increase to offset some of the cost to the jail. And it'd probably be two or three cents, is what we'd have to do in order to cover operational costs. And this board did not do it, though the board before, before us didn't do it.
That's correct.
And I have served on it for 12 years. Last year, the recommendation was that we should have raised taxes three cent. It was voted down.
Right.
So, now we're in this dilemma where taxes should have been raised the last two years, maybe a penny, a two cent, or a three cent, to help offset this cost, even though we knew that our, our sales tax were flat. And yes, the CVCC thing's a good thing. I voted for that. If I had to do it over again, I'd do it again. That was a two-cent tax increase. So, whenever we approved to do the CVCC project, we automatically said, "Yes, we'll raise taxes two cent," because we knew where we were at. We agreed to do the $15,000. And I'm sorry if I sound like something I shouldn't, but this is touchy to me. We spent $15,000 to do the Searl 16 South. And we do the Searl 16 South, which will help our economic development in this county, which I hope will bring people and then industry on 16 South.
It's actually $300,000.
Well, I know, but we pay $15,000 a year.
Yes.
Okay? So, we pay $15,000 a year. We're doing that. And, and we've done the things that I feel like have set this county up to be in a good position-
Sure.
-to do the economic development needs to be done. And we didn't raise taxes.
Right.
And we should have raised taxes. Burke County did the same thing. They held off, they held off, they held off, and they kept spending their fund balance, and bang, popped 22 cent out there. No, Caldwell County did. I think Burke County did 18 cent. But that's where we're at. And we have asked the state of North Carolina, and we had that discussion. You were with me, and I think Berkey was with me, and I know Andrew was there when I asked about getting a one-cent sales tax for Alexander County.
Right.
And they said, "You're gotta be kidding. Be that this year, don't even ask for it."
Right.
And so, there's no risk for us to put in for it.
Sales taxes.
Sales taxes, yes. And so, that's where we're at. What needs to happen is whether this board does it, or the board next year does it, whatever, you're looking at a 10 to 12 cent tax increase in this county, and it's coming.
Yeah.
And it's coming mostly because the operational cost and continual cost of the things that are costing this county for us to provide services.
Right.
We don't control social services. Our health department needs a male physician or a male practitioner, so they can see male patients, which they can't do now. And we're held back quite a bit because of the fact that our county doesn't have the balances that we should have. I sat here for three years and did everything that I could do, and we did things and didn't do anything for three years on this board. And you told me, Larry, we don't have money to do this, or have the money to do that. We finally got our fund balance built up.
Right.
And now, we've let our fund balance fall down because simply we didn't raise taxes.
And so, we're gonna be faced with the same dilemma where we have to build the fund balance back.
Right. And we're not be able to do anything for three more years.
And 8%, as we talked about, and we've all know this, is the floor. It's the minimum. It's one month operating funds. That's, we don't wanna get to 8% and quit. It needs to be much higher than that. Counties, our own size, it's 24, 25%. It's much greater.
Right.
It needs to be higher. So, we know that the situation we're in, dilemma we're in, and as we said earlier, it's the perfect storm.
It's the perfect storm. And we're there, and new actions got to be taken.
I would offer a different opinion on sales tax. I mean, I know that we have to, excuse me, on property tax increase. There may be a need, but there also needs to be, and not to take a divergent opinion from what the chairman said. He doesn't speak for me. And I think there's other members on the board. He doesn't speak for either. So, when it comes to a vote on property taxes, it's gonna be up to, up to us as a board to decide what the increase is gonna be, if there is gonna be an increase.
This is true.
That's right.
And I will admit that, sir, that it is. That's what I'm saying. This board has to make that decision as to whether they want to do it or not.
I respect your opinion.
That's all I'm saying. And this board will make that decision.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
That's right.
And that this board will make that decision. Right or wrong, we'll make it.
Right.
Does anybody else have anything?
Let me just cap it up. Rick.
Yes, sir.
I am a optimistic pessimist. So, let's, let's go in the future machine for a second and go, as a continuation of the conversation that Chairman Mayberry said. Let's go four years into the future.
Okay.
The way the economic cycles run in this country, we, we run into an economic recession roughly about seven to eight years. The last economic recession we had was in 2007, 2008. Perhaps in the fall, perhaps next year, maybe we'll have another economic slowdown, at best, a slowdown in the country, which will eventually affect us the next fiscal year. Based on your experiences in 2007, 2008, and the aftermath, what will that do with us chasing this, trying to keep ahead of the expenses in this county? What's it gonna do?
We're gonna have to look at all the services that we offer and evaluate each one of them, combine services if, if we can. A purchasing department is something we've talked about. That'll be a plus. But it's gonna take a lot more than that to make, get this thing in line. It'll be doing things differently than we're doing things right now, differently than we're doing things right now. And, you know, I mean, it'll take us looking at everything. I mean, really, nothing can be off the table. And I think you have to look at all possibilities. And, you know, look at services and look at different, if we, maybe we look at services, and maybe we'll look at somebody, maybe look, we look at different, other folks providing, even providing services for us. I know the mental health agencies now, they contract a lot of their services out. So, there's just, there's a lot of different ways to look at this.
So, combining, combining services with other counties as a possibility, you have in the service area?
Oh, I think that's definitely something, you know, that's something that a lot of, there's been discussion about doing. There's been discussion in the past, some, about, you know, trying to look at doing certain services with Caldwell or some of the counties around us. And conversations haven't gone very far, but those kind of things will have to get more in-depth. And we'll have to, I mean, we're gonna have to give up some control of some things to do that. And, and if it was, whatever service it was, you know, it just, it'll have to be done differently. If, you know, let's say, for example, we had regional animal control, where we did animal control with two or three counties, and we shared the area, and we worked the different areas. We talked at one time, just in general conversation, it was a long time ago, if you talk about any of the, any of the emergency type services, share, you know, several of the counties had talked to other counties to try to do it, maybe a multi-county type setup. Those are the kind of things you'd have to do. But looking at joining agencies together, and also counties, looking at, within the counties, see what else we can do.
Oh, we already have a template for that with the, the transportation. So, it wouldn't be that big of a stretch, but-
Right.
If that's the case, and if that's the possibility, are we looking at that seriously right now? Or are we just completely focused on the budget that we have in front of us? And so, and once we get this passed, we'll go the collective woo, and then move on, and then have the same conversation next year?
You know, I, there's things I would certainly like to look at. I don't know, you know, we need to keep having the conversations about it again with the full board. And we maybe, what we need to do is, instead of having two business meetings, we, if we do have two business meetings, maybe we need to have a work session type meeting and talk about ideas that we have. Maybe that's what we need to do, instead of having that second business meeting, and talk about some of these things. Some of the things that we do, though, may require us getting legislation.
Sure. But, but you had a great suggestion at the work session about, you know, creating a, a plan. Could we create a task force with, from the community to start at least looking at a potential plan?
Certainly.
Made up of community members as, as well as commissioners?
We certainly could. Other places I've worked in the past, we've done that very thing. We've involved board members and planning board members and some of the community leaders, and looked at different areas. We looked at sewer in one area where I worked, and to expand sewer service and what it would mean. And so, I mean, we'll look at whatever, whatever your direction is.
I, I'd like to make a comment, too. One thing that we have to remember, that all of us were elected by the citizens, and, and that's all the citizens had an opportunity to vote for this board. And the citizens pay the taxes that support the government, the county government, and of course, the federal government and the state government too, but county government in particular. And of course, there's a lot of figures that we have to absorb. And the last thing, and maybe Jennifer could help, the median household income in Alexander County is about, I think, $31,000 is what I heard.
I don't know.
I, I mean, I read. I think that's about what it is.
We don't know.
About 31?
It's about 31.
Yeah.
And so, you know, another side of the equation, if we look at, to Commissioner Ferguson's point, is look at how much median household income has grown in the last four or five years. And I would submit, just as a scientific guess, it probably hasn't grown a lot. It's probably decreased.
Right.
So, if we ask for or approve a tremendous tax increase, whether, or whether it's incremental or not, that tax increase comes from the citizens. So, we, we must, and by, I just think the appropriate thing to do is make sure that we remember who supports the government and where the money comes from. When we need, we vote next week on a property tax increase, because if their median income is not growing, we're taking money out of the taxpayers' pocket. And the median household income of $31,000 is right at the poverty level. And so, we've got to be very careful that, and I know a lot of people in the county, but not a, a large percentage, make a whole lot more money than that, and can afford to pay a whole lot more in property taxes. But when you talk about a median household income of $31,000, we've got to remember that.
Not to mention senior citizens.
And I, I agree. But one thing I think that we have to really remember in our county is this. We don't have water, public water supply in a lot of areas in our county. And that's so vitally important to our, for our county to grow and, and to survive as we move forward. We get calls all the time. The only chance we have for grants, and there's not many of them, there are more, there used to be zero interest, and now they're low interest as you move forward, and they happen more slowly, and we all know that, is you gotta have your fund balance up. And that's just one piece of this whole thing. But as we're doing this water project we're doing right now, we've waited since 2010 to do this. And that, I mean, that's great, but what about, you know, we have people call us all the time. What about this area? What about that area? You know, there's still areas where people need water, and I think that's very important. And I think that's the thing that we, you know, we, we sort of forget about. You know, you talk about serving all the, you know, serving people with the median, but I, you know, everybody needs that opportunity to be able to tie on the water. Town Energy United supply a lot of water and do a great job at doing all that. But there's still lots of areas in the county where we don't have water.
I, I understand that, because I just took a call last week about that, down in the Espie Watts, Polly Bowman, Perpactra Point area, that they have no county water. A lot of homes down there that are on wells and have poor water quality and so forth. I'm just saying, we should not forget who put us in these chairs. And I'm not suggesting anybody on the board is, but we also must remember what the demographics economically is of the county.
I agree. But I, but I, but, and, and as much as that, I think that we have to keep our fund balance above that, at minimum, above the 8%. I think we're, I think we're charged with doing that. To let it fall and be the lowest is, I mean, will take us several years to dig out. And in this year, without a tax increase, not only will we have, suffer the wrath from the North Carolina Local Government Commission, is that we won't be eligible for anything. If something becomes available, we won't be able to address it. And we'll be in a tremendous hole that it'll take us several years to dig out of. With the revale the following year, just make it that much more difficult. You know, and, you know, the board can say, "We're not gonna raise taxes. We're just gonna get, you know, tough our way through it. We'll have to let, let employees go." Well, we have to do things like that to get to that point, which will mean great reductions in services. But we have to keep our fund balance above 8%. I think we, I think we owe it, being fiscally responsible, to keep our fund balance at least above 8%. I think that's just, to me, that's, that's really something we know about. And as we move forward with what we, what we wanna do, that's just, that's just one of the basics. That's one month. You know, if we have, if we have some bad weather or have a storm, we have to spend money, all the things we've talked about, we would, would not be able to get reimbursed in a timely fashion. We need to have our fund balance back up.
I, I'm not disagreeing with all-
I'm just saying that-
Yeah.
-in the, in the scheme of things, we've sort of gotten ourselves in this position, and we need to do what it takes to get it out.
Yeah, but I'm just, you know, we've, we've got a lot of factors that we need to factor in before we make our vote.
I know you do. I know it's not an easy decision.
Well, I mean, this is a public hearing. If you all don't mind, I'd like to give the people in the audience an opportunity to speak and, okay, get you off the hot seat there for a minute. I know that we had one person that signed up tonight. There's Bud Kaywood signed up. But if you'd like to go first, we'll let you go first. Anyone else that would like to speak, if you come up to speak, please state your name, so that we'll know who you are and express your opinions in any way, shape, or form that you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. French, Commissioners, Ms. Starnes, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Bud Kaywood. I'm a resident of Bethlehem. My wife and I have lived in Alexander County almost 10 years now. I'm a furniture design consultant, and I own my business in Alexander County. I've served on many committees, boards, and commissions throughout my career, some at the state and, and even at the national level. In Alexander County, I serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Hidnite Center Board- Board of Directors, the CVCC Advisory Board, the Bethlehem Community Development Association, and Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. And I am a regular attendee of the county commission meetings and work sessions. Tonight, I speak to you as a resident of Alexander County, and in no way do my opinions or statements represent any of those committees, boards, and commissions. I am associated with, nor or represent any of those members. I know each of you personally and have sat in many meetings with you to discuss Alexander County. I appreciate your service to our county and I consider all of you personal friends. Alexander County is at a crossroad. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we are nothing more than a crossroad to our neighboring counties. There is a saying that if you have to, you have to take the good with the bad. That phrase holds truth, more truth now than ever before in our county. Alexander County is a good county with good people, but sometimes doing a good job means recognizing bad elements. We know that our county revenue is a declining trend. We know that small businesses struggle to compete with our neighboring counties. Just this past year, we lost a restaurant, a convenience store, our only dry cleaner, our only shoe store, and probably a few more. We know that neighboring counties pull nearly a hundred and thirty million dollars annually from Alexander County. We know that more than one-third of our population leaves this good county every day to work, shop, and dine. That's our money being spent outside this county. It is our money funding other county budgets, infrastructure, and economic development. Sometimes doing a good job requires recognizing bad elements. Alexander County has spent its way into a corner that it will be tempted to tax its way out of. Because of budget projections and revenue projections that at best can be called hopeful and a general lack of oversight from elected officials, both past and present, Alexander County finds itself on thin ice with the state and without a workable spending plan for the future. This commission needs to begin reclamation, but this cleanup won't be accomplished in a few months or even a few years. The first order of business is to recognize your own mistakes. You cannot operate the business of run a county, of running a county on hope. You cannot run any business on hope. It requires checks and balances, profit and loss, a good product, and a business plan to sell that product, and then hard work with tough decisions. Revenues for recent budget years have fallen short and outstripped expenses, forcing the county to dip into its fund balance, its savings account, and that is a bad element. It is the responsibility of this commission to first begin building back the fund balance and then seed economic growth opportunities. In that Alexander County has limited revenue sources, there is only one way to begin building it back immediately, impose an increase in property taxes. For this commission to not approve, not approve at least a minimal tax increase to first help restore our fund balance, but to pass the buck to the next commission is another bad element. Then it is the possibility, the responsibility of this commission to begin the process of a long-range development plan for Alexander County. Never before in Alexander County's history has there been a more desperate need for a workable, long-range plan. We need leaders who lead. This commission needs to begin the process of assessing what we have done or not done in the past and determine success or failure and how to proceed forward. This commission needs to look into its future for its population, jobs, infrastructure, education, social and cultural growth based on community visions, and then share its progress or setbacks with its citizens. In November 2013, Taylor Dellinger with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments presented a comprehensive report of Alexander County's economic perspective, from population to employment to education trends. He told us where we were, where we are now, and where we are headed. How is that information being used, or is it? Commissioner Mayberry, early in 2013, presented to this commission a long-range questionnaire that addressed many aspects of economic development and cultural improvements. It was a good idea that got shelved and has not been discussed again since. In August 2013, Commissioner Jennings formed a special committee that included commissioners, our EDC, and the citizens to discuss and research travel and tourism opportunities to help develop economic development, only to fizzle after two meetings. Too often, great ideas receive a flurry of attention when first announced and then end up ignored on dusty shelves in the county government basement. Leaders who do not lead is a bad element. The economic future of Alexander County depends on strong cohesive leadership. It depends on collaboration and teamwork between citizens, local businesses, and government leaders. On October 1st, 2012, this commission approved unanimously the contract to purchase the Taylor Togs property to expand education and technical training at CVCC. Then in February of this year, this same commission approved the funding of five hundred thousand dollars for a matching EDA grant for CVC technical training expansion. Good stuff and an absolute must for our county and our county workforce. But not all of you agreed this time that it was necessary. Dysfunction is a bad element. Alexander County is a financial, is in a financial bind and it didn't just happen. Now the economic future of our county is in a dilemma. During the past four years, I have missed only three county commission meetings. County Manager Rick Fench has reported in almost every one of those meetings that our sales tax revenue has remained flat and behind the previous year by two-plus percent. The best time to address and fix a problem is when it first occurs. The next best time is right now. Ignoring a problem, well, that's a bad element. Nobody truly wants a tax increase. Raising property taxes is not a good thing, but it's not the worst thing. Many towns and counties have faced a time where a tax increase was necessary, necessary to restore financial stability, but a tax increase can also restore pride and economic activity in the community. Alexander County is no different. We have a long history of necessary taxation. We must move forward. Remaining status quo and stagnant is a bad element. This commission was elected and charged to deal with county issues and make some hard decisions. This commission was elected and charged to embrace the opportunity to fix any problem facing our county. This commission was elected and charged to do what is best for the future development of its local businesses, improvement of education, improvement of infrastructure, increased cultural growth, and the well-being of its citizens. Any other motive for making your decision regarding increased taxation is a really bad element. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaywood. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? If you would, when you come up to the podium, if you'll give your name and then just go ahead and we'll give you the opportunity to speak. And I think there was three or four of you raised your hand, so.
Did I?
No, you're fine. You go ahead, then Larry Holland can come next and then we'll go work our way back.
I'm Larry Riddle. I moved here eleven years ago. I have been on boards something similar to what you boys and ladies are on. And I always felt that I was elected not to protect somebody's billfold, but to help guide as best as I could the final results of that situation. And when I hear somebody say that they won't raise taxes because they're a conservative, it makes as much sense to me as you driving by your neighbor's house and seeing it on fire and not calling the fire department, cause it'll take tax money to run it out there. Just as bad is somebody that says, raise the taxes to solve the problem is just like fighting that same fire with ten gallons of gasoline to start with. I don't agree with that part of it either. But you were elected to guide this county, not to do anything else, not to be heroes, not to be blamed for any past mistakes, but you need to guide the county. It would seem it's obvious to me that a four-cent increase is a leak. What you need is to plug that hole. And if you do anything less than ten cents, you're a fool on yourself. And I know some of you probably won't be on the board next year, but next year, those people are gonna pay for your mistakes now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Holland?
My name is Larry Holland. I'm a resident of the county, coming up on nine years, although I've, we've owned property here longer than that. I'm a retired vice president of Shell Oil Company and was a vice president of Pennzoil Quaker State for a period of time and a joint venture company with United Technologies for a period of time. I, I, my mind is seething with questions and the more I heard, the more questions I have, and, and I'll, I'll try to limit it to maybe just one or two. I, although I, I held a elected local government position in the past, it, it certainly gives me respect for the dilemma that you all face. It's not easy to, to balance things. It's very difficult. Very easy to get out of whack, very hard to fix. So keeping that in mind, the, the, the only real experience I've had and the magnitude that you're facing is about thirty years' worth of having to do budgets. And the further along I went in my career, the bigger the budget's got and the bigger problems we, we faced. Business and individuals have one disadvantage that you folks have, and, and that is, you, you have the revenue lever. If I boil, I know this is not a simple matter, but if you boiled it down to just two things, you've got two levers to work with. You've got a revenue lever and you've got an expense lever. In, in business, you would like to think you have a revenue lever, but I can attest to the fact that probably the most volatile, no pun intended, commodity known to man is probably gasoline. And it is astounding what a one cent a gallon price difference increase makes to your business. There's a direct downward trend you, you notice within seconds after a price increase. I've witnessed that for many years. I spent most of my career in Shell Chemical Company. If you were to raise the price of polypropylene, which is sold billions upon billions of pounds, you can lose half, half a billion dollar worth of income, because the company will just shift the business to somebody else. So I, I can attest to the fact that, that businesses don't have as much latitude with that lever as perhaps you folks do. So that called for the company management to work on the expense lever. And I ha, I worked for somebody once that, after being told I had to cut the budget for the umpteenth year in a row, he, he, he suggested that I ought to consider, what would I do if I had to pay? What would I have to do if I had to come up with the needed monies? And, and so I guess it's a long-winded suggestion that you, you need to consider that you've got two levers, and what I've heard tonight is the revenue lever. Awful lot of, awful lot of discussion on the revenue. My median income is, or my income is well above the median income and I'm very happy and proud of that. I pay more taxes at tax dollar basis than most people in this county. And I don't object to a tax increase if I have the sense and the feeling that there's been an adequate job done on reducing expenses. And I can only attest, and I can only state on my own personal behalf, that I have no sense that there's been an adequate job done in reducing expenses. If you truly believe that necessity is the mother of invention, I would encourage you to think in terms of what would each of you do as commissioners if you had to make up the shortfall? Instead of just, I shouldn't use the word just, instead of raising taxes, if you have a shortfall of three million dollars and it has to come out of your pocket, what would you do? I would be happy to pay that increase if, if I see an adequate job done on reducing expenses. And I don't see that. And I, and I don't read about it, and I don't hear the loose talk in the, in the community about that. I just want to reiterate, necessity is the mother of invention. You can reduce costs. Mr. Yoder, you referred to, gee, if we reduced staff by fourteen people, what would that do? What would the net effect be? Of course, you're not gonna get that fourteen people's worth of income back. But I would suggest that, and I didn't hear this tonight, and I'm very surprised, has anybody considered what the cost will be to the county if you raise the taxes four cents? Or if you raise them a dime? If you think that there is going to be no negative side to that, that that will be all income coming into you, let me be the first to tell you that won't be the case. You will have people vote with their feet. They'll move out of the county. In some cases, they'll leave because they have to. They have no choice. They must leave. And if they're spending more money on their taxes, there's going to be less money available for other things, which is going to affect your sales tax. And a one last word, and, and the sales tax thing, it, it just flabbergasts me. I'm, I'm sorry, but I've, I've heard this statement made by the commissioners for years now, that we need to spend more money in the county. And, and I've heard from my good friend Bud about the, the tremendous shortfall that we suffer because people are shopping outside the county. I don't know about you individually, but every time I read this in the paper, I think about my own situation. The number one thing I spend money on is my mortgage. If, if, if I can get a good rate, I'll, I'll, I'll fund my mortgage here in the county, and I have done that in the past. But that's my number one expense. My number two expense is my property taxes. My point here is that the bulk of the money that I have as disposable income is being spent in the county. It's, I don't drive to Hickory to buy gasoline, I buy gasoline here. I don't drive to Hickory to, to buy my groceries, we buy our groceries here. And if you throw in the cost of electricity, I have to buy from a, from a company, whether they're in the county or not, and, and my phone bill, I have to, I have to have a phone service and I don't know whether they're, Verizon isn't paying the county any monies, as far as I know. You start looking at all the incidentals, and the overwhelming majority of money that I spend, and I suspect the rest of us do, is already being spent in the county. So I would really encourage you to, to get off that bandwagon. That's really not going to have a positive impact. Necessity is the mother of invention. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Yoder, board, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name's Hank Byrd, I'm the president of Snyder Mills. I just, I don't envy you your task. I wanted to speak today simply on behalf of the monies in the budget for the CVCC. As, as we all know, this county has seen a shrinking of its industrial base, which I'm a part of. We've been here sixty-eight years, working real hard to be here another sixty-eight. As, as those of us that are still surviving are doing very well. We've seen Mitchell Gold expand, we've seen Craftmaster expand, Piedmont Fiber Glass is doing well, Paragon Films that was brought in is doing well, and Snyder Mills is doing well, healthy, expanding our employment base, increasing our payroll, and as a result, we, we're here to, here to stay in, in the county. As we look to the future, we see a need for improved education. We support the high school, we support the high school education, but with the increasing technology that we're seeing coming down the pike, we need advanced education. Having CVCC in this area is a real plus. Having CVCC in this area is a real plus. We were thrilled to death when CVCC purchased the building for supposedly to be able to put hard skills in there—electricians, welders, plumbers. All those are skills that we need. We spend our money locally. We find that machine shops are in short supply. Every year that passes, we have to go way further and further away from here to purchase the types of stuff that we need. So having the outlook of CVCC, which has actually been increasing every year—their attendance, their participation, gives us the outlook that as we go forward, we will have the people here that we need to employ to do the things we need. So we've seen over the years since I've been here—and just think about these things. There was a hospital here when I got here nine years ago. Today, there's not. If we hurt someone, it's forty-five minutes now to the emergency room. There was—we've seen the Chamber of Commerce disbanded here due to the shrinking industrial base, no longer able to support it. We've seen things disappear. We've seen machine shops close up. We've seen machinery—our automotive repair shops come and go. These are things and assets that are very valuable to this county. The county needs to thrive and prosper. We need the county to thrive and prosper for our benefit. And so as we look to the CVCC, continue to delay the installation—the installment of those types of activities that give better skills for our workers is a problem for the future. We started up a business here five years ago, started with four people and X amount of money. Today, we're up to fifteen people in five years. If you transfer that out, five more years, I'll have sixty. Scale that out, another five years, we'll have three hundred people there. That's what you mean to get the economic well-being of this county up. We need more employment. We need it through better and skilled workers. And we see the CVCC, the growth of that installation here is a real plus for this county. So we're asking—you know, again, thank goodness I'm not the one that has to split the pie, but we're supporting the advancement of that and the increased services that that is able to provide us. I mean, we used to employ people with no high school education. Today, to sweep our floors, you have to have a high school education. The people we're hiring today all have computer skills. We spend a ton of money here training them ourselves. We would like to see those skills continue to build for our well-being and the well-being of this county. And our money, a lot of it stays here, as much as possible. We look to buy locally first and go outside when we can't buy locally. We spend a lot of money in this county, and we appreciate the support that the county's given us over the years, the last sixty-eight years, and we look forward to being here with you the next sixty-eight. So we want this county to grow and prosper because that's our benefit as well as yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me this opportunity. I had not planned on coming up and speaking, and I've heard some really great speaking, and that's not something that I do very well. My name is Catherine McCurdy, but what I lack in speaking ability, I make up for in fire and passion about things that are important to me. And I was sitting here, listening to everything, and I think, well, what kind of voice do I have, a perspective that I can bring to this discussion? And I guess the best way I can explain it is I represent the others that come to the community. When I think back—I moved back here, I was born and raised here, and I moved back in 2006. I never dreamed, in my wildest dreams, that what has happened to the county would happen. And I moved back here, my sister and I, we built a huge house, you know, and we just—you know, we're one of the ones that thinks about how long can we remain? Because it's becoming increasingly worrisome because I don't think that we're really systemically holding anything or really resolving anything here. I would give a couple of examples of me being an other. I mean, I don't go to church. I don't have a husband. I don't have children. You know, I don't—I'm not a Sunday School superintendent or a deacon or anything that seems to be qualifications for, you know, being involved and active in the community. I'm an other. And I don't think that, you know, this county really is sensitive to inviting others to come in and be a part of it. We are looking at numbers on the budget, but what we need to be looking at is, is Alexander County really a place that invites other people to come in and be part of their community? And if we're going to grow, we're going to have to become that kind of a community. A couple of years ago, Alexander County voted eighty-six percent against the Amendment One for Marriage Equality, same-sex marriage. That means that eighty-six percent of the people who voted in this county believe that people choose their sexual orientation. And recently, last year—I understand it's going to be different this year, but last year, my black friends had to sit on the courthouse underneath the Confederate flag while the ceremony was being conducted. Shame on Alexander County for that. I mean, how would you feel if that were the case? And lastly, last year—or—I mean, it seems a long time ago, but it may have just been last year—the county voted against alcohol sales because drinking alcohol is going to send you to hell. This is a very theocratic community. We want people to come in here and live here that are like us, the same color, that go to the same church, that have the same values. You don't share my values if you fly the Confederate flag. You don't share my values if you think that somebody having a drink is going to, you know, send you to eternal damnation. You don't share my values if, in fact, you think that people choose to live a lifestyle that condemns them to others. Are we going to be a community where others are invited in and considered and respected? Or are we going to keep the same old status quo? Are we going to keep inviting the same people in here that are just like us? Because I can tell you right now, we're only putting a million dollars back in to the balanced fund, and we're still taking a million and a half out. Well, how many years can we do that before you get to zero? I mean, I'm no mathematician, but even I can figure that out. The number-one thing is becoming the place that people want to be and accepting and inviting in others different than what has already always been here. It's like—the first thing people do when they get up is say, "I've lived here, blah, blah, blah." I mean, you know, "I'm one of you." I'm not one of you. I am in spirit and love for this community, but I'm not one of you in that I'm a carbon copy of you. So I would ask you to consider that because the budget problem will not be solved until the people of the county face a real fact, and that is, we have to embrace a total community, not just shut our doors and build a wall around ourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Ms. Graham?
Good evening, Chairman Yoder, Commissioners, Assistant Starnes, Manager French. I have great news for you. On June the 5th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Tarleton Complex, CVCC will graduate 481 GED graduates. Of that number, eighty-six are from Alexander County. Daily, we meet with current students and other citizens who are seeking technical degrees so that it will enhance their skills to go back to work. That's our job to do that. The barrier, as we see on a regular basis, is that of transportation. Most of the time, they say they wish they didn't have to travel to Hickory or some other community college to obtain that degree. With local technical training available right here in Alexander County, not only for our citizens, but also for Alexander Central High School students, so that they can obtain a duly-obtained accreditation, certification with the technical degree. Additionally, apprenticeships and internships could well be implemented into these technical training programs that would help our businesses obtain the qualified employees that they're seeking. Training locally and getting hired locally would ultimately help our economy thrive. Lastly, tomorrow night, in this very room, I invite you to return as we celebrate and congratulate our GED graduates with a President's Reception from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. Thank you for your help in the past with believing in higher education, and we thank you for looking forward as we move this county forward and train locally and hire locally. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? If you would, please.
My name is Chuck Wales. I'm a new resident of Alexander County, and I wasn't going to get up here and speak on this, but I would like to state my points. We had the alcohol issue in town that I live in and that I did live in. It was brought in, and I just moved to Alexander County in Taylorville in November. But I moved here because of the love of the community, the atmosphere. You've got a job to do, I know that, but I knew what the alcohol had done to my town. And my home—I have a home in MacDill County, well, in another town that's already paid for. But I enjoy living here in Alexander County. I don't have no solution to your problem, but I did want to get up here and tell you what a beautiful town you have, the friendship, the warm community. I really enjoy it, and I appreciate everything you do.
Is there anyone else? Is there any other commissioner that would like to say anything? Mr. French, do you have any other words you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Yes, I'd like to—I'm not going to say anything else. I think enough's been said. Everybody's expressed their opinions. This board will be considering the budget. We'll look at all aspects of the budget, and this board will vote and then decide on this budget. It will be a tough issue, I can assure you that. We will look at all different ways that we can do to try to make it better, and we'll see what the outcome will be. And at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any other discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number two on the agenda is the Alexander County Events Update. Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saturday, May 24th, is our second Rocky Fest, which is a day-long event that celebrates the park's second anniversary. The day-long event will feature activities for the entire family, including 5K and 10K trail races, free rock climbing classes, children's activities, live music from three of Alexander County's finest bands, food, and guided nature hikes. The 5K and 10K races start at 8:30. Rock climbing classes start at 9:00 and run through 4:15. Concessions will be available between 11:00 and 7:00. Live music will entertain the crowd from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, featuring the Sugarloaf Ramblers from 3:00 to 3:45, Shook Lane from 4:00 to 5:15, and the Idle Time Band from 5:30 to 7:00. Please be sure to bring a lawn chair. The Piedmont Amateur Astronomers will set up their solar telescopes around midday to give the public a unique opportunity to observe the sun, and urge you to be here at that time if you're interested in that. There's a number of children's activities that'll be held from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, including free inflatables from Dunkin' Game Rentals, face painting, which there's a small fee for that. The Hidnite Center is also planning some children's art activities for free. There's—we'll have—this year, we'll have some vendors, and they'll be set up from 3:00 to 7:00, displaying and selling that wide assortment of nature-themed items such as walking sticks, pottery, wildlife, artwork, and more. The Park Rangers will be giving free guided nature hikes to explore the trails at the park at 5:00 PM. I'd like to ask everyone, due to limited parking, that they try to park first at Rocky Face Baptist Church. We'll have a shuttle provided by Greenway Public Transportation that'll transport visitors to and from the park. And again, that's Saturday, May 24th, our second celebration of Rocky Face Park called Rocky Fest. And, Mr. Chairman, next up, we have the Veterans Memorial Day Service Program.
Okay, I'd like to call on Mr. Mike Anis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Anis. I'm the commander of the American Legion Post 170 here in Alexander County and a member of the Alexander County Veterans Service Committee. Sunday, 3:00 PM at the courthouse, we will have our annual Veterans Memorial Day Service. During the service, we honor the Blue Star Mothers and the fallen veterans of Alexander County from the past year. This year, there'll be over seventy names called at the roll call. The World War II and Korean War and early Vietnam veterans are leaving us at an alarming rate. Just the DAV this year has already—I mean, this month's already done fourteen funerals. It's—the older generation is leaving us fast. So we would like to invite the entire county to come out on Sunday at 3:00 at the courthouse to honor the veterans of Alexander County and the families. And we're also going to dedicate a Blue Star Memorial that's been sponsored by the Garden Club of—
North Carolina.
—North Carolina. That'll also take place at that event. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's Sunday, 3:00, Alexander County Courthouse, and it's a very moving ceremony, especially when they announce the names of those who have gone on. Thank you, sir.
May I add, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Ben Hines is going to be the pastor of ceremonies for that event.
Right. That is correct. Next, there is Habitat for Humanity and Lions Club Crawled Add Benefit Game. I'd like to call on Hazel Yoder. Along with her is Matt Cooksey from the Habitat Program and the District Lines 31B Governor, Chuck Wales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Just a refresher of what we have going on, and it's something that Lions Club is very happy to do, is to join with the Habitat. What we were trying to do was actually to raise $12,500, and that way, we would get $12,500 from international, which would be matching funds, and Habitat would provide the other $25,000. What we've done, we've joined together to help build a VIP, a Visually Impaired Person, a home. That wasn't the only thing, you know. They didn't have to be a visually impaired person. It just so happened that it was, which got the ball rolling for the Lions Club. And what we've done—I have thirty-five clubs in my district, and everyone had jumped on board. The churches in the community have really helped out. But what we're trying to do now is something that you probably see vouchers are actually in bigger sizes, but someone has minimized the size, and I didn't bring my glasses.
You want me to read?
The Memorial Day Service is going to be great at 3:00 Sunday, but you will have enough time to get from there to the ballgame at the Crawled Add Stadium. Normally, their box seats are $9. This particular day, they are $5, and whenever you have—you had to have a voucher to go to the ballgame whenever the Crawled Add are playing the River Dogs. And if you have the voucher, you present it at the gate, and you only had to pay $5, which in turns, Crawled Add Stadium would give Habitat and Lion $4 on the proceeds back. So this way, you're getting to do a great humanitarian service, watch America's game, and figure out what a Crawled Add—I mean, what a River Dog is. So we're all for the—I thank everyone in the community and basically the state has one of these, and I thank the Ms. Yoder. I mean, this thing has really went—it's really went good. But the part about it is, if we were going to raise the $12,500, that's going to be great. What if we were going over? That's looking good. Which in turns, this year, Habitat has two houses to build. Everything else that we can raise over the $12,500, that will take a lot of the things off of the Habitat, which in turns helps build the other home, which in turns—I'm still governor, we're jumping on board with that, too, so it's not actually the VIP Lion that we were trying to build. we were trying to build a home for. We just want to help Habitat, and I've just found a beautiful place to do it at. So I'll ask Ms. Yoder, she's got anything to say?
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening, and after such a long, difficult meeting, we're so happy to talk about a wonderful celebration such as this. This is one county-wide support, and when District Governor Wills mentions the other districts and the other clubs involved, we're talking 35 clubs this year. Burke, Catawba, Iredell, Wilkes, Alexander, et cetera, et cetera, and they chose one project, this is it, for the district, right back in Alexander County. This gives us, I think everyone smiles when they think of bringing monies back to this county from anywhere else, and we have a great opportunity to do that. The gentleman who is the recipient of this home will throw out the first pitch with a little help from his friends, ROTC from Alexander Central High School. It gives a nod to Memorial Day. They will be our color guard, and all veterans certainly will be honored and recognized on that day as well. Just want to take a moment to thank everyone in the county. The support has been wonderful. We only have 3,100 seats to fill, so we're hoping you will bring your friends and enjoy a great day to great ballpark for a great cause. Thank you.
Only thing I'd like to add is that we actually have started building the home. I'd love to have some volunteers. We're going to be doing wall raising this Saturday. It is going very fast, and with a lot of help, we might be, the one humor in Habitat is they always ask me when the house will be done, and I always tell them by Christmas. And then there's another volunteer that always sits there that looks at him and says, "You noticed he didn't tell you what year?" But I really hope that we'll be done by the fall, so I would encourage people to join us. It's a very satisfying, and it's a good feeling day. It's a wonderful day to come out and work with people in the community and build a home. And I'd like to add one last thing, is that we are also working very hard. There's an Independence Day Committee. We are bringing a professional fireworks show to Alexander County for the first time in many years, and it will be at the high school on July 5th, and it'll be a 20-minute fireworks display, so mark that in your calendars as well.
Sounds good. I'd just like to commend, Matt, the work that Habitat and the Lions District 31 has done. I think it's great. It's brought a lot of attention, not only to the Lions Club, but it's also brought a lot of attention to Habitat, and I think that what you're doing is great, but the biggest thing is, building the house is the largest thing for these folks. And when you guys raise this money and are working together, it's going to make a great contribution to someone in Alexander County that needs assistance, no matter who it is. And I'm glad to see that you guys did this, and you all are to be commended on a job well done. Can't wait to see the house finished.
Neither can I.
What would be the point of contact if you wanted...
Larry, they're having a wall raising this Saturday.
Yeah, what would be the point of contact in case you did get volunteers that wanted to help you raise the walls?
My cellphone number stopped being private the first week that I moved to town, is what I discovered. It is 828-612-2630. Just give me a call. We're still very personal here. I don't mind calls in the evening. I don't mind them at all. Just give me a call, and I'll work out the details with whoever. That's 612-2630.
Like I said, I did have one more thing to add. I did say earlier that I just moved to Alexander County. I just got married in November. But District 31B has a VIP, we always say VIP is Visually Impaired Person. We call it our District Songbird, which is a VIP Lion. Amanda Anderson, she sung at my wedding, and she will be singing the National Anthem here for this thing, so it's really going to be a good one. And we also have another one, another person that wanted to throw out a second pitch as part of Alliance Night, where she is with the Special Olympics, and she is also visually impaired, and we're just excited about it. After a long meeting like that, it's kind of hard to get up here and get pumped up, but what we are, we're actually excited about it. We're talking about building a home. No, we're talking about building a couple homes this year, and we're really excited about that. So, I mean, I can get to pull off the shoe, put on some boots, and get to go build some Saturday. I'm actually in town Saturday, so I would like to encourage the commissioners to also show up for the ballgame, and I'm sure y'all can swing a hammer, too.
Thank you very much.
If you're one of the three people in North Carolina I missed, in giving vouchers, there's a huge stack in Bethlehem Library and at the main branch at Taylorsville Library, and you can pick up as many as you wish.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda, resolution to commit fund balance. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a resolution in your pocket to commit fund balance. Whereas the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued Statement Number 54, Fund Balance Reporting and Governmental Fund Type Definitions Effective for North Carolina Local Governments for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2011, and Going Forward. One of the fund balance classifications is Statement Number 54 is Committed Fund Balance, which results from the governing body formally placing a constraint on the use of a portion of fund balance. The constraint remains legally binding unless it is removed or modified by the same type governing board action. The North Carolina State Board of Elections has requested counties purchase new voting equipment to be in place for the 2016 presidential election. The Alexander County Board of Elections Director has estimated the cost of new voting equipment for Alexander County at approximately $140,000, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners commits $140,000 of the June 30, 2014 fund balance of the general fund for the purpose of purchasing new voting equipment as requested by the North Carolina State Board of Elections. And it would be, if you approve it tonight, it'll be approved the date and signed by the chairman and attested by the clerk. This is something we're required to do so that all the counties will have the same type voting equipment.
And who, Mr. French, is requiring us to do that?
The State Board of Elections.
And that is being done by General Statute?
Yes, sir. The State Board of Elections are making us do this.
I just wanted to make the point...
Yes, sir.
That it's not always county commissioners that cause these problems to happen. I just want to make that point. Would you agree, Mr. Kenny?
Yes, sir.
So that's where I'm coming from. Gentlemen and ladies, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Resolution to Commit Fund Balance?
And I second it.
Motion's made, and second, is there any discussion?
This is, just one thing, this is not a request by the North Carolina State Board of Elections. This is, request is a nice way of saying that you will do this, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number four, Board Appointments and Reappointments. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alexander County Appointments, May 19th, DSS Board reappoint Larry Yoder, three years. Library Board of Trustees appoint Miranda Bergen, three years. Reappoint Maggie Breeden-Taylor, three years. And Jamie's also noted that we need a commissioner to serve on the Western Piedmont Council of Government, MPO, RPO, Transportation Advisory Board, but tonight, we're just considering those three appointments.
While we're on these boards, there's an air quality board, and I do not know who the commissioners are supposed to serve on the air quality board. I honestly believe it's me, but we need to find out who that is because we need to check into that, okay? Because I think, if you don't mind, please.
Is that the cause?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Because they're getting ready to, they're getting ready to lower the standards, and when they do that, that means that we're going to have to do some more things in this county to come under certification for our air quality. I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the Board Appointments and Reappointments.
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. You didn't vote, did you?
Well, did you vote?
Yes, I said all those in favor raised your right hand.
Good night.
Okay, excuse me. I'm sorry, ma'am. So all in favor was five, and the motion carried unanimously. Item number five, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 35. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 35 is to increase the extension service budget for donations from outside sponsors received during the 2013-2014 budget year, as well as donations received in prior years that were not spent prior to the end of the year. And that's the only budget amendment we have tonight.
Move to approve Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 35?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item number six, Other Business. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to call on Josh Mitchell, our Solid Waste Director, to give a report and make a presentation to the Board of Commissioners.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll be brief. Here tonight to talk a little bit about our franchise, Solid Waste franchise agreement we have with Republic Services. The agreement is up the end of June. Republic has requested a five-year extension. The franchise agreement includes transportation disposal of waste to fit hills environmental. Simply, we have a transfer station here in the county we operate. We load the trash on tractor trailers when it comes into our transfer station, and the cost we pay is a tonnage fee, which includes the cost of those tractor trailers to haul it to Lenore and the tonnage fee at the landfill. Another part of the franchise is that Republic Services provides commercial and residential service here in the unincorporated areas of the county. That being said, commercial would be, of course, a dumpster, a restaurant, a compactor box, it's a craft master. Residential service would be your curbside trash pickup, where you take your trash out to the curb a certain day of the week, and they pick it up. A new thing we're trying to add this year in the franchise agreement, or not we, Republic is offering, is countywide single-stream curbside recycling. This is going to be a great thing for us in my beliefs. It'll be where county citizens every other week can, will have two different bins, one for trash, one for recycling. The recycling pickup is every other week, and it's single-stream. So all your recycling goes in one bin, you roll it to the curb, and they come and pick it up, take it off. In the franchise, they've asked for a five-year extension. If the board chooses to go with the five-year extension, they are going to waive the CPI increase until next June, when they take effect. In the contract, we have a yearly consumer pricing index increase, and if you look at the savings over the next five years, it's going to save us $50,000 roughly, depending on tonnage, things like that, and that's on the transportation disposal contract. So that'd be the fee we pay to the landfill in Lenore. And they're also going to hold the CPI out for a year for all commercial services and things like that as well.
Josh, a couple of questions, and I know the answers, but I just want to make sure that people listening and watching know the answers. The curbside pickup with the rollout canister is not free?
No, sir. I've got some more slides on that.
Okay, okay. The second thing is, that doesn't mean that a person, a resident, has to elect for that rollout. They can still use the convenience centers, can they not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We'll go ahead and go to the next slide. Here, and the reason Republic is able to offer this service with the single stream is they have updated their MRF, or Material Recovery Facility, in Newton, to where basically, I hate to be redundant, but all your recycled materials go in the same bin. It's going to be an automated truck that comes out with an arm, picks it up and dumps it in the back, no more of the guy on the back of the garbage truck. Everybody's going to have to use the same trash can. People won't be able to sit just trash bags out by the road anymore, which is going to help us out as far as litter goes and animals tearing into garbage bags, things like that. But it'll show up at the facility, the truck dumps it out, it goes through a series of conveyors, magnets, eddy currents, puffs of air separate the plastic out and the paper. They actually have a grand opening coming up in about a month, but, so that's why we're able to offer this stuff. And I hope to, soon as well, if we get this going, change the convenience centers over to the single stream as well, where citizens won't have to sort their stuff anymore to convenience centers or recycled materials, that they will basically just all go into one bin, then we'll pick it up and haul it over to the MRF.
And Josh, a point on that, I know I've seen not necessarily what is done by this particular process, but I've seen on public television, and I think I talked to the county manager about this, that they actually go through, as it goes over with the conveyor belt, they pick out the plastic, the cardboard, and they separate it at the disident when it's transported to that place. Is that, is it in effect what's going to happen here?
Yes. And it's all automated. Used to, these MRFs were more labor-intensive. Basically, you had a conveyor belt and people standing on each side, and it was one guy's job to get the milk jugs out, one person's job to get the newspaper, one person's job to get the aluminum cans. But now, as the technology has progressed, it's a lot more automated and uses things like, like I mentioned, eddy currents, which repel an aluminum can, so as the stuff rolls by on the conveyor belt, the eddy current will push the can off into a certain bin. Then you've got magnets for your, for other metals and things like that, you know, for your tin cans. Next slide, please. So right now, these are the current rates for the residential service. If you are a citizen and use GDS, it's $20.49 a month if you're using your own trash can or placing bags on the curb. If you're renting a GDS cart, you pay $22.99, and with the numbers provided by Republic, they have around 2,100 customers in the county, and two-thirds of those people rent carts. Next slide. The proposed services, they will offer every residence in the county curbside trash pickup once per week and single-stream recycling every other week for $24.29 a month. For the people who are already renting the carts, that's a $15.60 yearly increase for a whole other service that you can do from your home. I think it's just a good thing because we're going to be using all the same trash cans everywhere. Your neighborhood's going to look neater on trash day, I guess you could say. And to me, for $15.60 and you just roll your recycling to the curb, it seems like a pretty good deal. Next slide. Some of the benefits with the curbside, single-stream recycling, they're going to accept more material. Right now, basically, all we take at the convenience centers are plastic bottles and jugs with the neck smaller than the body of the jug, but with this, they'll be able to take rigid plastics, which would be buckets, your dinner tray, like your microwave dinner trays, Cool Whip tubs, things like that, aerosol cans, and the list goes on of things they'll accept. I've got uniformity in there because everybody's got to use the same trash can, no more just sitting bags of trash out by the curb, which, you know, just really doesn't look that great for us. In turn, that creates less litter because animals tear into bags of trash. The tonnages will go up as far as the recycling material we take in. There's been studies where anywhere from 40% to 50% increase in the recycling with the single-stream curbside recycling. If you look there, it shows the automated truck in the picture. It's got the arm out. It just drives by, picks up the can, dumps it in the back, and is on his way. And then, you know, as time goes on, we can keep adding different materials to the single-stream recycling. But I think that's all the slides I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Josh?
Josh, I'm sorry.
We're really interested in the trash, y'all.
You know, have you contacted any other service providers to get proposals from them, Waste Management or anyone else?
I have, over the years, talked with, there's a company we deal with now out of Wilkes County, it's Foot Hills Sanitation. They're actually the company that picks up our recyclables at the convenience centers now.
Right.
And I've gotten quotes from them, and it's always, Republic has been better priced just because they have the equipment and the ability to do these things. And we've had a...
Waste Management's probably the largest...
Yes. Next to Republic, or Republic's right under Waste Management.
Right.
We've worked with Republic for 20-some years and feel they've always did us a good job. One thing you've got to really think about, and this is something that kind of holds us back, is we're so close to the landfill in Lenore, and the next closest one is Charlotte Motor Speedway, and both of those are owned by Republic Services. So if you go much... So if you go much further than that, you're gonna pay so much in transportation costs, it's gonna eat us alive. And so with us having this franchise with Republic, we actually get a better rate at the landfill, and then we're able to offer every home in the county trash pickup at the curbside.
The $50,000 savings, is that gonna be because now trash that's picked up by them is gonna be recycled and not as much goes in? How are we saving the 50,000?
Well, we will save money as far as the tonnage drop. When the recycling tonnage goes up, we'll save money on that end as well. But that is specifically talking about a Consumer Price Index increase. It's written in the, in the contract that yearly, based on, I think it's December CPI, or maybe, they take that percentage and raise the price every year to help cover inflation, higher operating costs, things like that. But they're gonna waive that until next year, right? So then it's a continued savings throughout the next five years because it knocks off a chunk at the beginning.
So they're increasing their prices?
The price for curbside pickup is going up, but it's offering a whole nother service, I guess you would say. It's not just going up and offering the same thing. It's offering, you know, the countywide, single-stream recycling.
But before, you did not have to recycle?
No, it's not offered, curbside, except in the town of Taylorsville.
I meant the trash didn't have to be recycled, you didn't have to take, in other words, now, the garbage that's going into the landfill is gonna be less.
Yes.
And you're gonna, and they're gonna come by, and that's included in the price.
Yeah, the 24-29 is the flat rate for-
So you're getting an extra service.
And they provide you with two 96-gallon carts.
Okay.
One for trash, one for recycling. Recycling is only every other week. The trash is every week because, you know, you don't want your trash sitting around for two weeks, or most people don't, anyway.
Josh, you were talking about that perhaps you'd have single-stream at the convenience centers as well. What would that look like at the convenience centers?
Well, right now, I'm planning on, when we, when we get ready, we're not starting now, I don't wanna confuse anybody out there, but we'll just change over the dumpsters that we use now for recycling to single-stream. Where basically, it'll all go in there, then we'll run our extra garbage truck and pick it up and haul it to the, to the MRF. Eventually, the way to really go would change over to compacters and have out there that would, would compact the recyclables. And then when you get a compactor full, you haul it to the MRF, in a way you got, you know, eight to 10 tons of recycling on there, instead of seeing the truck around all the time to pick it up.
Would that change the fee structure at the convenience centers at all?
Fee structure, not really. I mean, I think the recycling numbers will go way up, and it'll save people more money. We haven't changed the fee at the convenience centers. I mean, it's been 10 years since, before I was even around. We probably need to. But, but that's the plan to begin with, just get into it and then kinda tweak it as we go, I guess.
Josh, not to prolong the conversation about recycling and so forth, but I think to Mr. Ferguson's question, because I go to the convenience center on Tecton Road, and before I go, I separate all my plastics and my cans and my bottles and, and all that. You put them in different dumpsters, if you will, or different containers, recyclable containers. And now what you're proposing for the future-
Yes.
-is everything will go in one bin.
Right.
I won't have to go through the process of separating all that stuff before I go to the convenience center.
Any recyclable material will go in together, then we, you run the same truck as you see us picking up garbage with. You just have to clean it out, of course, before you pick up the recycled material. See, right now, everything is source-separated, what you call it. So when you come in there, you put your plastic in a bin, you put your cans in a bin, you do that. The company out of Wilkesboro comes around once a week and picks up plastic, once a week and picks up cans, every other week and picks up paper. So that's a lot of truck traffic going around there. Once we start this, we would be running our own truck, and, you know, we might hit each convenience center twice a week or something, you know, or pick three sites up and take it into empty, you know, to Newton to dump. And also, they said, they gave me a number, if we were to haul it to them, and it was $20 a ton that they would pay us for the, for the single-stream recycling. And that number, of course, can go up or down. The commodities market is very wavy. It's, sometimes cardboard can bring a good bit of money, sometimes it's not worth anything, you know, I mean. So, but they said 20 bucks, so we could make a little bit of our money back, you know, that's gonna cost us to haul it over there.
Mr. French, do you have something?
I was just gonna mention that we're not looking for a decision tonight. We just wanna get this information in front of the commissioners, and we'll be back in, at the next meeting to talk to you more about it. But I thought we'd get this information in front of the commissioners tonight.
I, just one comment. I personally like to see one or two proposals from other competing companies.
What if they don't wanna give us a proposal?
If they don't, then that's fine. But I think it's important to make sure that, I have no doubt that Republic's probably gonna have the, the best proposal, but I think it's, you know, you're not doing your job if, if we don't get proposals from outside, you know, companies. So I think we need to do that.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. French, anything further?
No, sir. I do have an item for a closed session, though, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Consent Agenda, I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda. I have them as A, B, and C.
And I second it.
Motion's made, say any discussion. There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed likewise. We will adjourn, and I'll make a motion to go to closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information in regards to, I believe it's contractual, is it not, Mr. French?
It's a legal-
A legal matter, in regards to legal matter.
Or something.
We will re-adjourn for the primary purposes of adjournment only. Make that in the form of a motion.
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Motion's made, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion's made, say, all in favor say, I mean, raise your right hand. All opposed likewise. Thank you.
[applause][1785.88]